Yes, I'm on the phone.
Okay, so Benjamin is here. Veronica?
Here.
Baylor?
Here.
Chazdorff?
Here.
Holdman?
Here.
Tarks?
Here.
And Mr. Sardine is excused.
Is there anyone desiring to be heard? Please step forward and your name and address, please.
Absolutely. My name is Marge Kozlowski. I am a resident of Brookfield 1225 Vista View Drive. And I'm here on behalf of my other part-time job is being board president for Elm Brook, New Berlin Senior Taxi. It's been a couple of years since I've been here. It's my pleasure to update you all on our activities over the last year. First of all, I want to begin by thanking all of you for the support that you've given us for many years. I've been board president now for about seven, and you've always been very supportive, and we really, really appreciate it. The last nine months have been pretty transformative for our organization, starting with the successful merger with New Berlin Senior Taxi this past April. The combined operation has dramatically expanded our capacity. We now have 10 vehicles and manage a team of 42 part-time drivers, seven schedulers, and that's enabling us to deliver 20,000 rides in this greater Butler, Brookfield, New Berlin area. To effectively manage this increased scale, we decided to move from having a part-time leadership team to having a full-time executive director. I wanted to introduce that full-time executive director, Francis Bobo. He joined us just about a week ago, so really brand new. So a few things about our numbers. In contrast to that overall growth, the demand in the Butler service area actually decreased somewhat this year. Year-to-date, we have delivered 103 rides to eight Butler residents. Basically, what's happened is some of our disabled adult families had to cut back on their usage of our services because their budgets, that the financial support they're getting from the state was significantly cut. So we are still helping those families, but they're just not utilizing us as often. They're transporting their loved ones themselves. Basically, despite this lower volume, I just want to remind everybody the remaining rides are really critical. Over half of those rides that we executed so far this year are for those midday meals over at the Brookfield Senior Center. As I think you might know, folks can go to the Brookfield Senior Center. They pay $1 each way, and then they get a hot meal in the middle of the day. And that's a really important part of seniors' lives and their social well-being. We're going to continue to work with Waukesha County ADRC to educate Butler residents about our services. I know it's been a little while since we did like a full-blown campaign, and we're going to try to work on getting those ridership numbers up. We successfully maintained our fares over the last 18 months, providing predictable pricing for all of our customers. Unfortunately, like many households and organizations, we've been experiencing and facing rising operational costs, and specifically, the premium on our auto insurance has doubled this last year. So while we are intensifying our focus on securing philanthropic foundations, funds, and soliciting donations, this increased burden makes it highly probable that coming in 2026, I'm going to have to raise the fares. Like I said, we don't take that lightly. We know it impacts people's lives. It does make it harder for them to use us, but doubling the auto expense has just been too big of a hurdle, I think, to make up for from donations. So in closing, as I said, I really want to thank you all for all of your support. Almost every day, one of our drivers hears from one of our passengers. I don't know what I'd do without you guys. I don't know how I'd get around without you. This service is truly a life-changing force in our greater community, and it simply wouldn't be possible without the support of communities like Butler and the other municipalities that we receive support from. So we thank you. And as we navigate this coming year, we look forward to continuing this partnership. Thank you so much. And I'm always available for questions. I know I only come for the public comment, and in some places I get three minutes, and I have to talk really fast. But I have always offered, if at any time anybody wants me to come and spend more time explaining how we work and how we operate, anything about our finances or whatever, I'm happy to do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I know a lot of our, we get feedback as well that our residents do appreciate your services, and they utilize it as most often as they can. So I appreciate that as well. Thank you. Anyone else desiring to be heard? None. Consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept a consent agenda.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Communications, anything other than the department reports?
Not for me.
Thank you. Committee reports, Community Foundation, we met yesterday. We talked about the general maintenance of the grounds at the Clark House, and in springtime, putting a coat of wax on the caboose. And we are also working on getting more tours started. End of report. Building Board?
Building Board met this evening at 5:30. We had the review of an occupancy permit for 414 Autosports located at 5073 North 125th Street, and we agreed to approve that occupancy moving forward. End of report.
Thank you. Finance Committee met this evening, and we did approve and listen to testimony about a credit that was given to a business. And it was because there was a large water leak that did not go through the MMSD. So we agreed to compromise that. End of report. Public Safety Committee?
Public Safety met at 5:00 PM this evening. We had presentations from the Butler Police Department, the Butler Fire, and the Brookfield Fire Department. Modibles for the, on the police side were Officer Joel Foose completing his 25 years of service, which is a great accomplishment. We have no staff issues at this time. They continue to do an extreme amount of training, which we observed through a number of incidents has really paid off. Saturday, November 1st coming up, they're going to have a Stuff the Squad event to raise food for the St. Agnes Food Pantry. For further details, please see our YouTube presentation of that meeting. Lot more contained in that. On the Butler Volunteer Fire Department's side, kind of status quo as they're winding down with that. The rigs have been tested, hoses have been tested, repairs have been made, and they are moving forward and working with Brookfield in the transition to Brookfield, assuming our fire and EMS service. End of report.
Thank you. Charlene, are you ready for the Library Board?
Yeah. The library is closed on October 14. We had a full complement of board members plus one guest. We welcomed him to the board, so thank you to the Village Board for approving her appointment. We went through the Director's Report, which I would point out is always in our meeting packet. If you want to know what's going on at the library, please check that out. We reviewed policies. We updated our program policy, patron conduct policy, approved the quarters of the library policy, and approved a memorandum of understanding with the friends. And our next meeting will be November 11. And end of report.
Reported, reported the Administrator?
I just have one large item for you today. We are pretty much set with the budget document. I have finished going through it. There's just one or two things I need to add, but the document itself is completed. If there is no changes to the budget, as I am going to be proposing it tonight. And then on top of that, we have started to ramp up for tax season. We have met with the county, and we are also getting, submitting documents to them for how, you know, different types of payment methods that are going to be updated, the inserts, all that type of stuff. So we're getting ready for that. Obviously, tax bills will not be going out until probably the second week of December, but I just wanted to update you on that, that we are starting early on that. End of report.
Thank you. New Business Item A, Sarah Martinio swearing in of Michael, trustee Michael Brannick. Veronica.
Mr. Veronica, do you want to come to the forefront here quick?
Can we raise your right hand?
Aye, say your name.
Aye, Michael Brannick.
Having been elected or appointed to the office?
Elected or appointed to the office?
Of Village Trustee.
Village Trustee.
But have not yet entered upon?
Not yet entered upon.
The duties thereof.
The duties thereof.
I swear or affirm?
Swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin?
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge?
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office to the best of my ability and thought and knowledge?
The duties of said office, best of my abilities, so we got it. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Item B, Discussion on Possible Action on Committee Appointments for Trustee Michael Brannick.
So these committees were the ones that Mr. Meyer was seated on. I believe that we can, that these are, according to the Village President, what he would like to see Mr. Brannick serve on, at least until the new term comes in April, and then we can talk more about rearranging the committees if the Village President so wants it to happen. So these are the three committees as listed on the agenda that he would be appointed to.
Any questions or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to have the Financial Committee, Community Events Committee, and Zoning Board of Appeals welcome our new trustee.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All in opposition, say nay. Motion passes. New Business Item C, Discussion on Possible Action on a Certified Survey Map for Fitting Industries to Combine Butler Tax Keys BV10090001 at 1271 West Hampton Avenue, BV1009006, and BV10090007.
So this is the old Chase Bing property, as you know. This CSM is just going to be combining the building itself with the park, the two lots that take up the parking lot. So right now, the parking lot on the western side of the building is split up into two separate tax keys for whatever reason that was. But we want to kind of clean that up, get that all combined into one lot, because really, the two parking lots are accessory uses, and you can't have an accessory use without a primary use. So basically, it's just combining those three lots, getting that all cleaned up, making it one tax parcel. The Plan Commission did vote to recommend approval of this back in their meeting two weeks ago. So that was unanimous. Any questions that you have, I'm happy to answer.
And it doesn't change their status of, if they wanted to go for like an institutional type of?
Correct. That rezoning was done for all three of the properties, so it would not affect any type of zoning.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the certified map survey for Fitting Industries to combine the set tax keys.
I'll second that motion.
I heard Bill and Eric at the same time. Mark and Eric made a motion. Has been, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 On opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Item D, Discussion on Possible Action on an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Brookfield for EMS and Fire Services.
So as you may remember, two weeks ago, you voted to move forward with the Brookfield proposal and finalizing an agreement. Their city attorney and our village attorney spoke at length about the agreement as a whole. It was more or less about just language in there. I included this with the packet, but there was no substantial changes with regards to how much we pay, the increase, anything regarding that. There was nothing, you know, touched with regards to acquisition of equipment. Again, it was all pretty much just, I'll just call it kind of lawyer talk, getting the correct verbiages down that were agreed upon by both of the attorneys. Mr. Cass is here, if you want to ask him any questions, but I believe, Mr. Cass, you are in agreement that there was no substantial changes to the document itself as it was presented two weeks ago in that proposal. But the Village Attorney is happy with it. Their city attorney is happy with it. I'm okay with it. Chief Cass, I believe is okay with it. So if you have any questions, feel free to let us know. If not, that is the agreement that would finalize the process.
The only question I have is like, what time on the 31st would this become effective?
I guess we can work it in there probably, I guess it would be midnight on the first?
Or noon?
Or, I guess.
We'll end the day, 31st is. It's likely to be midnight, but I'm anticipating as we get closer to the first of the year that we'll probably be increasingly, probably pretty much taking over all the calls by then.
Okay.
Yes, so the Butler Fire Department would still be in operation as, you know, our fire department up until that point, but my assumption is that as the transition process goes, we're going to eventually get to the point where Brookfield is pretty much just going to be covering us by the end of the year. That's good.
So we wouldn't need a time in here? Doesn't matter?
Okay. By the time we get towards the end of the year, where I have all the response plans loaded into the CAT system in Waukesha County, it's just a matter of flying through that. So it can be midnight, it can certainly be beforehand, but I'm anticipating by beforehand is we'd be like.
So like, would it start then before, like midnight or at midnight dispatch would know? How does that work? That's all new to us? Okay.
Right now, we have like a skeleton response plan.
Okay.
Where we just respond and have it up automatically, and then maybe this operating other.
Okay.
Eventually, we are a town.
Okay. That's the only question I had on it. Otherwise, everything was the same.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I had raised the concept that the last meeting about the 3% versus tying it to the CPI or the rate of inflation, and in the course of the last couple of weeks, I worked with Ben, and I know you've collaborated with that conversation as well, and as it ends up, I'm feeling very good about using the 3%. Just to have that firm expectation, it helps us with our planning and everything. And anyways, I just wanted to acknowledge that that was brought out and discussed, and I just wanted to vet that option. It happened.
Are there any other questions? No questions, Bill?
No, I did.
Okay, Bill's good. Okay. Bill said everything looked good. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Eric.
To move forward with the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Brookfield for EMS and Fire Service.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All in opposition, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you for everyone on their hard work on that. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ben, Aaron, and your staff. Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
New Business Item A, 2026 Budget Presentation.
Give me one second.
Okay, so I have put together a high-level review of the recommended 2026 budget. You'll see in here that it doesn't go into really deep departmental, line-by-line type of items. It's just summarizing the significant changes and things to note, kind of building off of what I have received feedback on in the past, is trying to make it more condensed, a little bit more digestible. So it's going to go pretty quick here, and feel free to stop me at any point if you have questions or have a comment that you would like to make, but here we go. So I'd like to start off with the challenges in crafting the budget, and I think that, again, you can ask Chief Cass. It's probably the same, same type of problems for him. But for us, the major factors were the fire department transition and the elimination of the transfers from the utility funds. As you may remember, we were making a total of $78,000 in transfers from the utility funds to the general fund. That was deemed to be improper as we had already done allocations, and the transfer started in 2011, and then the allocation started in 2015, and they were basically accomplishing the same thing. So we eliminated those transfers after discussions with the auditors, and they deemed them to be improper. And then as we know, that the fire department transition is the biggest item where it is an increase of about $200,000 or so thousand dollars to our budget that we did not have in the past. Other factors that are not necessarily lesser, but just less significant. Inflationary pressures continue to be an issue. Continued lack of state funding and flexibility, increase in cost of healthcare. We had lower net new construction this year compared to past years, and we are also, next year, looking at the decrease in ambulance revenue. We're still looking at some leftover from the previous billings and the stuff that we have in STC. So that's why it's not completely dropping to zero. There will be collections from this year and prior years through the collections process that are going to be coming in. Some positive impacts, where we did receive the expenditure restraint funds again, but it is a little bit lower than it was this current year. We did have an increase in non-tax revenues, and assessed values are going up slightly in all sectors of the Village, including the manufacturing. So normally, we don't have those manufacturing numbers before this time, but we actually got those manufacturing numbers ahead of the budget. So those did rise by about $600,000 to $700,000 in value, so that's positive. And then the department's abilities to maintain or decrease most spending in non-payroll-related areas. So I do want to acknowledge all the departments where they did really hold the line on the costs, and you'll see this as I go through the budget. The goals were to keep the Village tax rate, charges, and fees as low as possible, acknowledging that there was needing to be backfunding, and we did need to close the budget shortfalls. We are looking to fund the fire department transition in a fiscally responsible manner. We did that through a multitude of ways, again, having the expenditure restraint funds, instead of going to the capital fund, being the general fund, borrowing for all of the capital next year, so that frees up $220,000 to be spent in the general fund to help cover those costs. We have the, you know, we want to maintain employee retention by keeping the benefits where they are or improving them, and then obviously maintaining our good financial position, as you heard two months ago from the auditors, that we are in a very strong financial position overall, regardless of, you know, even considering our size and the challenges that we've been having recently. So some highlights on the revenues in the general fund. Again, we saw increases across most categories except for public charges for services and miscellaneous revenues. Again, those are because of the decrease in ambulance revenues that we're going to be expecting and the elimination of the improper payments from utilities. We are expecting that the sale of fire department equipment is going to be covering about $100,000 to close that budget gap. The elimination of the 2% fire dues also has an impact, as we will not be receiving those. And this year, I've gotten a couple of questions. It was about $14,000 that we received. And as I stated earlier, the expenditure restraint money will be paid to the general fund instead of the capital fund this year to help close that budget gap. For expenditures, the expenditures are mixed for most of the departments. By and large, most items are staying relatively consistent or decreasing. Most of the increases are being driven by payroll-related expenses such as the annual raises and required retirement contributions and cost of insurance. But a lot of budget items are staying where they were in 2025 or being cut slightly, with the exception of the police department, where we saw some increases with regards to training, but I think that that training is very necessary to happen for the police department. And there was also a couple of other areas in there in the police department that did see increases. And then we did see a large increase in the contracted services, mainly due to the fire department transition. And we're hoping that this is not the issue going into 2027 as we transition and look at the other ways of funding the fire department other than having direct tax dollars going towards that. So any quick questions on the general fund? Again, it was kind of quick, but again, for the most part, those expenditures are staying relatively consistent where they were in 2025. A lot of the departments are not increasing their budgets much, or we're seeing cuts in the budgets to kind of offset the increases in the fire department costs.
What specifically, not to get too deep, but you said, police department, number of areas have gone up for their budget. What were those things that?
I know that training increased. I know that membership dues. Chief Zulinski, can you, he put together his budget, so I'll let him speak to that.
So I don't have to lie there, but the majority of our increases are related to necessary requirements that we have as far as contracts for our computer and dispatch system, our reporting system. Our fees have been paid for the radio tower for Waukesha County to have radio communications. Motorola for access to our flex software that we utilize to conduct evidence, put evidence at the property audits. Those are all subscription-based, or like annual fees that we get estimates from, mostly from the county and/or the private vendors. And we're required to maintain all of those and maintain our functionality, basically. So we don't really have a say in that, so that's where the majority of our increases were. We did also decrease like our training and ammunition budget based on some estimations that I made to try to help follow it to my costs. So the majority of our things are, I'll say, out of our control, but they're contractual that we have to have every year.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
So moving on with the fire department. As I stated in the last item, you guys voted to move ahead with the fire service agreement earlier this month. The total cost in year one is that 585 number with $70,000 of that number going towards the capital expenses. So operations-wise, it's 515 for the non-capital-related items. We did see revenue loss as a result of the transfer. As I mentioned, the 2% dues and the ambulance fees are decreasing, so we did have to make up those loss in revenues with revenues elsewhere or cuts to expenses. And again, this year, we did pay for it through a variety of avenues. Again, like I stated, we were borrowing for all of the capital that will be then repaid in January 2026. With tax revenues that come through, we have the sale of the fire department equipment, transfer of the $50,000 from the municipal levy charge for fire protection to the water utility, and other smaller adjustments here and there. Any questions with regards to the fire department transfer, how that's getting funded?
Do we have any contingencies on, because you're putting a number to what you think we may get for equipment? So $100,000 is, that's not including our hope to pay off the ambulance that we have a note on, correct?
Correct. So that would be, the hope for paying off the note with regards to the ambulance would come from anything over that $100,000. So if we don't reach that $100,000 number, then we wouldn't be, we'd just be continuing as normal with the debt service payments on that until 2030.
So that $100,000 is what you're expecting, is including the sale of that ambulance?
Correct. Correct. And we have received interest from two departments in the surrounding area that are interested in purchasing the ambulance and the 2014 engine.
Oh, and then have you been working with McMahon on that?
Yes. So we are going to be getting the books from Chief Zulik here shortly that have the specs of all the equipment that he has, and then they'll be able to work out a proper valuation of those.
McMahon's helping with the evaluations? Okay. But just to follow up, then what would the contingency be if 50 grand is all we're getting?
So that's.
Where's the rest? I mean, what's the contingency of that?
And that's the thing that is the unfortunate part of it is there basically would be a fun balance. It would be fun balance that would end up having to take the hit on that if we didn't meet that number. There wouldn't necessarily be a contingency. Typically, the Village has always run over in our revenues. Typically, the village has always run over in our revenues year over year. So we were usually pretty conservative with what we get for revenues. We normally run over it. So it probably wouldn't be that exact fifty thousand dollar hit if that was the case. But that would be, you know, the short, the the stopgap would be using some of the the fund balance.
So you, I mean, technically you do have a contingency or you do have a backup plan for, I guess, for a better way to put it, right? Because your base in this is part of the the budget. So that was just in case something happens, where do we go? That we don't have to come back and say, what are we cutting?
Yeah, great. Any other questions? Library fund. The library is increasing their tax dollar amount by about three thousand dollars for next year or about three point one five percent. This is the first real increase that they've had in I think about three years. We held them steady one year and then we did cut them a little bit this current year. So we are increasing them by three thousand next year. They are helping keep their cost, their costs lower, or I should say making up the revenue by using their twenty twenty four surplus to help fund the operations in twenty twenty six. Cause they are in a very healthy position with regards to their fund balance and they're well within their fund balance policy. So they are using that to offset some of the increases in expenditures. They are expecting a large increase in amount of miscellaneous revenue mainly due to increased friends contributions. And they are going to be seeing an increase in the intergovernmental revenues they get from the county for about four thousand dollars. And then I did keep the interest earnings for for the library steady because this is the going to be the first full year with the endowment fund. Already the endowment fund has increased in value by over a thousand dollars in the first couple of months. That versus the money market that we have it in that has four thousand dollars more than that has only been making about fifty bucks a month. So it's it was it's been significantly more of a run of revenue generator than the money market. So I'm very happy to see that. But I kept it even just because I want to see a trend on on that before I start to increase their revenues. Every other revenues expected growing steady and overall revenues are expected to increase by about thirteen thousand. Their expenditures, their wages and benefits are increasing to catch their employees up to market rate. This is a part of, I believe it was a three or five year plan that Charlene on the library board did put together to get everybody up to where they they should be. And again, as I state here, various areas of the libraries expenditure budget are increasing for various reasons, including replacement of the firewall, replacement of computers, training and membership changes for the new director. And again, that is the increase in expenditures matches the increase in revenue. So they will be obviously having a balanced budget for next year. Anything Charlene or Susannah that you wanted to add onto that? Any questions from the board? Okay. Park and rec fund. So we are, we're decreasing both revenues and expenditures in the park and rec fund. This is mainly due to lower expected costs of community programs and park maintenance. The, when I talked with trustee Meyer earlier in the year, the, we normally had about a thousand dollars budget for the community programs. That's only been a few hundred this year and he said that it could probably be lowered mainly because when it comes to the expenses related to that. They aren't going to be doing the bingo bugle advertisement anymore. So that was the large majority of that cost. And then also they mainly pay out any type of expenses related to the event using the cash at the events. They basically come out without needing receipts or to be paid out after the event. We're, we are going to be doing the fundraising for part of the fireworks again. That was a success this past year. So we decided to keep that going. And then we did have a slight upward increase in parks fees due to recent trends in revenues from rentals of the ball diamonds and increased bingo revenues. And, you know, we do have, I did want to make a note because there was a couple of questions that I received from the, from the committee where I wanted to include in here that the revenues in excess of the expenses stay within the fund to possibly cover shortfalls in the future budgets and unexpected expense overrun. So just kind of making it clear to the board that the park and rec money is their money. It stays with that fund. And it will cover anything that is unexpected that may occur.
Just one clarification, because I know it's been talked about quite a bit, the park and rec fund. It's their own budget. The money stay within the fund. So anything raised goes to park activities.
Correct.
And not maintenance of the park, just to clarify.
So what's raised with regards to the the bingo money breakfast with the holiday characters, as I like to call it. All of that goes towards the funding of the the parade in Fourth of July. The tax dollars that are raised go to or that are put towards it go to the park maintenance. So anything like the ball diamond maintenance, spraying for weeds, fertilizing, anything like that, the tax dollars support that, the tax dollars support the fireworks. And then I can't remember if there's one other expense item that it's that the tax dollars support, but it does include the maintenance of the parks.
And then did you get any response from your advertising for anyone to join in on the committees for twenty twenty six?
I have not received any responses that I am aware of. There was one person that came in a couple of times and asked, but then she disappeared. So I don't know.
So then there's like a line by line by line then for this specific cause.
Correct.
Like two categories. One is the park maintenance itself.
Correct.
Physical grounds, the other are the activities that do. So just to keep it all.
Correct. And yeah, and that's what, that's where we're seeing the decrease in revenues and the decrease in expenses. Because we're decreasing the expected expenses in the park maintenance. So the tax dollars needed to go towards it are decreasing in that same amount.
Wouldn't it just be easier to put the park and rec facilities on a line by line in the general budget and then just leave park and rec for their own activities? It just seems kind of muddy to me.
That, again, that's how it was set up in twenty 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 one when the fund was set up. So it would, there would be action required by the board to move that, but I don't know if we would want to do that this year.
No, I think we just leave it as is, but I think we did that in twenty twenty one to better separate out the monies being brought in from the bingo and the community events. I believe is why we set up that fund.
Yeah, I believe, I, yeah, Bill's
That's correct, yeah.
You're correct.
The fund doesn't just speak to those two things. It speaks to the grounds as well. That's the only point I'm raising. And it's fine. I'm not like opposed to keeping it this way. It just seems like it would be clearer to have. You know, events only for what our money are raised and what we give to that fund. And then for the grass and building maintenance, just keep that in line by line in the general budget.
We could separate that. We could we add a line? I mean, that's what I think the confusion is, is with the park.
Yeah, and there, there is a line by line. Again, when you see the final budget document, you'll see the line and by line breakout. Again, if that's something that they wanted to move over, that's an action that the board would probably have to take through a resolution. But I will make a note that again, it's kind of a double edged sword where if we don't spend as much, then the tax dollars then go into the fund balance of the fund and goes towards future park activities. Again, but if it does go over, then it will draw on that fund balance. So it's a double edged sword when it comes to that. So if you want to move it out, totally fine.
I, I don't want to move it out. I said huh? Well, and that's what we're just, there, there continues to be confusion about the park fund. So we're trying, what I'm I want to make it a little more clear. And I think what Mark's getting at is being able to see the monies brought in a little bit more clear and not commingled with the maintenance.
The park maintenance.
The park maintenance. That's what I, I think we need to look at.
So in essence, protecting what you're bringing in.
Yes.
For long cutting.
Again, I guess I'm
We're trying to make sure we can see that.
I agree with what you're saying.
Yes. So maybe we could add a revenue. I think what it, could we add a revenue, revenue line in the park budget? To to better see the monies being raised. Would that make sense or no?
We could rename the parks, because right now it's just labeled park fees. Which is where all of the baseball diamond rentals, the the bingo money and the breakfast with Santa breakfast with Easter bunny. And if there's any other programs to bring in money. There's arts and crafts show that was, I think, last year when that, all, all that money got put into that parks, parks fees line item, but we can rename that item if you would like to be something else that's a little bit more clear as to what that is going towards.
So if somebody rents the ball diamond, that revenue that's generated, is that going to the same place that we pay for the community building?
The community building is kept in the general fund. So the, the maintenance of the community, again, like I said, just kind of going off of what, what's, what's currently how it's structured now, but the maintenance of the community building, yes, is in the general fund. The maintenance of the actual park grounds with the spraying of the weeds and stuff like that, that's in the one oh one account.
The ball diamond.
Ball diamond, yes. If they did any type of tree planting.
So those fees that are generated from the rental of those go to the general fund?
The rental of the community building and the pavilion go to the general fund. The rental of the, again, kind of the grounds with regards to the ball diamonds go to the one oh one account.
So the revenue, the revenues are commingled. The, the revenues from what's being raised on bingo is being commingled with the baseball diamond?
Correct.
And I guess what I'm asking is could, could we add another revenue line, simply separate that out? So you have, I think that's
Yeah, we can, we can separate it out and we can rename the park fees and make it a little bit more clear.
Well, one should be like community, I mean, I'm just thinking aloud, the, the community revenue or community programs.
Yeah, community event revenue.
Revenue and then everything else.
Like, yeah, park, yeah, like baseball diamond rentals.
But the main, I think that would help.
Okay.
Clear things up from the park side.
Okay. Any other question?
Does that make sense, Kevin?
So yeah, so we are waiting on FEMA approval for public assistance that should come in November. They said estimating. Again, I don't know what's going to happen with the government shutdown if that's delaying that at all, but the fees that would be recouped by reimbursement from FEMA would be going towards the park. Any, any charges charged to the one oh one account would be covered by that reimbursement.
I got it. Good, thank you.
Debt service fund. It will be increasing by two hundred fifty four thousand dollars next year to a total of eight hundred fifteen two oh seven. Expected interest income is remain, is expected to remain the same. The biggest thing leading to that increase was that two hundred and twenty thousand dollar note that was passed by the village. Again, this is to fund the capital expenses for next year and to limit the amount of interest expenses. We are, we did it for one year and one day, so it's technically a long term note. And that two hundred and twenty thousand is going to be levied on the tax bills and then repaid to us. Through those, through the tax collection, it's going to be paid off immediately in January. So it's not going to have any long term impact on our debt obligations. But it is the reason why it did increase the amount that we need to collect by that two hundred fifty four thousand dollars, the majority of that. For, I'm sorry. And then, yes, that's with the revenues and expenditures. For the borrowed money fund, we are expecting that to increase to eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars next year. Because we are doing a larger road project where not, we're not, we're not only doing the roads, we're doing the alleyways. As you probably have noticed, the alleyways south of Hampton are practically gravel at this point. So we're going to be redoing a lot of those alleyways and we're also going to be having to repair the cracked sanitary sewer lines on south side of Hampton on one twenty fourth street where the televising found that there was, that those were at risk of collapse. We did not repair them within a year or two. So we are hoping that that can get completed next year. And we are using L R I P grant funds in the amount of about thirty one thousand dollars to offset some of the costs. We're not expecting any borrowing for the sanitary storm utilities. And then we are expecting borrowing for the water utility, but we're expecting that to be in the form of revenue bonds. So it would not be part of the borrowed money fund. It would be part of the water utility fund. And again, we do that because that reduces the amount that we have to levy on the tax roll and reduces the amount of our geo bond debt increase because we do have a cap on that put on by us, put on us by the state, which is five percent of our equalized value. And we have an internal policy saying that we don't go above seventy five percent of that five percent. So we're still very well within it, but this is a way that we're going to try to prevent the growth of that and the growth of the tax bills. So the capital fund with the revenues, we are expecting, like I said, the the expenditure restraint funds will be in the general fund. We're not expecting any grants next year. Again, that could change kind of depending. There's a couple of grants out there that we're looking at, but we didn't want to budget for those because we don't know if we're going to get them. And then, as I stated, the borrowing of two hundred and twenty thousand will be the main financing source in addition to the small increase in the expected interest income. With regards to the expenditures, this is a list of pretty much all of the projects that were, are going to be on the docket. Including various office, office computers that would need to be replaced, a replacement squad and the changeover. The one e-bike for the police department plus the outfitting. Eighteen thousand one hundred is allocated to police technology upgrades, including new squad computers that need to be replaced. Evidence from computer and body cams. Police department locker rooms, seventy thousand for the fire department, twenty thousand for carpet replacement and concrete floor repair in village hall. We're looking at installing cameras at the park due to the various incidents of vandalism at the park. We're also looking at getting new ones possibly at village hall and at the DPW and we're looking at getting door access upgrades for DPW because right now they're still unlocking key. Instead of the FOB system that we have here and they've had incidents where people, while the doors are unlocked, they're doing something in the back. People have honestly walked into the building and stole stuff as they have been in the building. So we want to get that FOB access in there so that we don't have that problem. And then again, a new DPW computer up at the DPW building. Any questions on the expenditures?
What's, what's the, what are we doing to the locker rooms?
Chief Zulinski, can you come and speak to that, please? I believe chief, if I, if my understanding is correct, the current locker room layout was meant for seven officers, not nine. So
That mic has to be turned on.
Is, is there a light on?
Yes, yes.
Looks green.
Yeah. So, so, so the locker room remodel originally started back in twenty twenty three, so two years ago this time of the year. When Chief Quinlan had proposed the change over to the locker room after we had increased the size of our department. That was approved in the twenty twenty four budget as a capital item. One of the things that was not thought about ahead of time was the fact that when we increased the size of our department, when we had some issues with our older squad cars and twenty twenty four, we had to, I'll say, have an emergency replacement of a squad car. The agreement that was made at the time was to forego the locker room remodel in twenty twenty four when it was already approved in order to help fund a new squad car. That was an unexpected expense. So moving forward from that to current locker room, besides the fact that it's currently set up for, for only seven people, the lockers are effectively cabinets, locks are broke, they can't be replaced. So, so they don't, they don't work anymore. One of the things that I'll say we're finding as maybe a residual of the referendum and increasing the size of the department are the other things that maybe weren't thought of that go with it. Such as again, having adequate space, having lockers that can secure our, our weapons, our duty belts, our radios, things when officers are not on duty. Compared to other municipalities, we are challenged with both the size of our department. And I'll say the facilities that we have bare minimum at best. And so as ways to improve not only the building as part of village hall, but to improve some of the conditions facilities for our officers was part of this original plan. We currently, myself and the captain, I'll say we have lockers in a storage closet in the back. So looking to maybe formalize some of those, some of those areas a little bit better long term. We're not we're not asking for some of the things that you see in other departments such as AI software technologies, drones, lock cameras, other things. I'm looking at ways again that we can slightly improve conditions for the officers that we have here. Maybe I'll stop short of saying a retention effort with locker rooms, but it's an improvement in the little things that we can do
Sure.
in our department for our people is, is, this is one of those, this is one of those items.
And chief, can you please speak to some of the other items just because I think there might be some questions possibly on some of the other ones, but if you can just speak to the other line items like the e-bikes and the squad computers.
Can you get one bike or two?
Well, based on the budget amount currently, we're going to look at implementing one bike and implementing the program in twenty twenty six. And then based on its success and or necessity, expand that program moving forward. So again, kind of a, I'll say an amount that's, that's feasible to train, equip and outfit a bike program. I have talked to our, just on that topic, I've talked to our officers. There's a high level of interest. Again, it's a simple concept. Bike patrol is nothing new. I, I said this a year and a half ago or so, but I think it's perfect for our community to have officers out patrolling areas that maybe they don't with squad cars, patrolling out on bikes, stopping out, being more readily available, talk to people and driving around in a squad car. Although our officers do a good job of that already, I think there's benefits for special events and other things related to that. And as far as scheduling goes, there's obviously limitations on when you're going to have an officer on a bicycle. But taking a typical pay period, so a two week pay period with all of our scheduling between the hours of six AM and two AM, so everything but the four hours in the middle of the night, basically. Seventy for seventy five percent of the time, we have more than one officer on duty during those hours. So it would be feasible and obviously not all the time because there's vacations and there's training and other things. We'd have the ability to have a bike out there, not just purchased and sitting in the garage somewhere. That's my goal with that.
I know we put that on hold as well last year.
From last year.
That, that's a carryover.
And I appreciate that. Sorry. Appreciate that you're, you're taking it slow. If you will, let's see what one bike does. And I, and I think that's a, like to thank you for that, also keeping in mind our budget. But also wanting to do more for the community. So you have a balancing act as well as the board.
And on the, the locker rooms, I was, it's my understanding that there aren't many vendors that do that type of work. That, so the price is kind of. That's probably what the price will be for the locker demo and the, the new lockers.
Yeah, so that, so I mean, vendors that do it, I guess if you were to look around, they're all basically the same picture, like an industrial modular type metal locker system. We do have limited space within our current locker room, so only some of the lockers will have like, for example, like a bench up front, like an area underneath for officers to like put their boots or their vest or their uniforms if they get wet or other things like that. Sure, there's a lot of gear that would fit in a small space, but yeah, there's not a lot. And again, if you, if you looked at our locker room, it really looks like a storage room. They're not even necessarily lockers, they're large cabinets with locks that don't work for it.
Do you know where those put in in twenty ten? Do you know when the building was remodeled?
I don't know, but if I had to guess, I would say yes, just based on the design of what, of what the other cabinets and et cetera looks like. We did have a, the company that installed the cabinets and lockers with all the remodel here. They came in as we tried to get replacement locks or a more secure system because they just don't work. We had somebody show up once, the company was going out of business and effectively we'd have to redo the locking system if we wanted to keep our current system at all security.
And then I noticed the item two was the, the allocation for the, the new squad car. That's sticking with our current plan of trying to get you caught up on these cars. How do we have a, like a timeframe? Has Ford gotten better with getting those out to us at all? Or are we, should we get that ordered sooner than later?
Yeah, so we've kind of put our name in the queue, so to speak, already. But they have improved significantly over, say, like years ago, as far as the timeline on that. So our biggest delay typically is once we get the car, because we don't know when that's going to be. Then having all the equipment ready for it to get outfitted. And we, we just, we just had our newest, newest squad done. If you look in the back of these cars now, you would need a, you would need a degree almost to understand the wires and the connections and the electronics that is associated with the lighting system, the radio system, access to the computer system, keep it all powered to connect the radar units. So yes, the timing is better, but the, the technology that's in these cars is, it's outstanding, but it's also necessary, but it's also complex, so.
Can we, can, can we then, knowing that the car is, we don't know when it's coming? Can we get that equipment sooner rather than later?
Yes, and we've already begun a plan of looking at what we can take off of our twenty twenty one squad, which would be due to be flipped over, which is almost at eighty thousand miles. And what fits from a twenty one, twenty twenty one model to a twenty twenty six model, we can use as replacement parts, so.
And some of it doesn't, right? Some of it doesn't trans, won't transfer over because of body styles?
We, but we are utilizing everything that we can.
Right.
You know, from one car to the next. So this is a budget number based on an estimate price on the squad, an estimate price of the changeover and the equipment. My hope is that we would have some flexibility or maybe come in under this number if we're able to be utilizing that equipment.
Is seven twenty one the one with the bad engine or is it seven twenty two?
Seven twenty two.
Seven twenty, okay.
Is there any equipment from the fire department that can transfer over, whether it's radios or anything that could help you guys? As just either backups or, not that it's going to help this budget, but maybe looking forward that you do have some stuff.
Yeah, so potentially I, I haven't seen what an inventory of their equipment is. You mentioned radios, but that's at the top of our radar, as I brought up before, that supposedly by twenty twenty eight.
It's all fubard.
Phase two where our current models may not be adaptable to be utilized in the field. So it's either going to be a purchase of new radios, of which we're looking at some grant options and funding available for that. But depending upon when some of the fire department radios are purchased, they may be upgradable and or usable, whether it be in the car or portable handhelds on, on the officers. Certainly something I would, I would love to look at.
I'd love to keep it in-house, right? I mean, there's more value if you could utilize it than us selling it for pennies on the dollar.
And Brian, we talked about computers and other types of items like that.
Great.
I think just, I remember chief Zulik talking about those radios, that those were coming obsolete sooner than later as well.
They just bought some newer ones, so there are some that might possibly be.
Possible.
In, in the, from.
Not too long ago they bought.
And Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we went to the radio meeting for Epic County, they did not have a list of radios that were approved for the twenty twenty eight changeover. They didn't know what radios were going to be eligible at that time. They basically told us planning is going to be difficult.
I know, they're doing a different frequency.
I mean, there's some that are definitely obsolete.
Yeah, and I'm not, and it, we don't have to get too deep into it, it's just, it's not going to affect budget, but I'm just trying to at least put it out there that if there's something there to help, it just helps everybody.
Any other questions?
What is the seventy thousand dollars for the fire department?
So that was given to us by the Brookfield Fire Department. That is our share of their capital expenditures. So that again factors into that five eighty five number. I did not receive a full build out list of it's going towards turnout here or, you know, this or that. You know, I think chief Cass is still here, so if you wanted to know what that might be going towards, you can answer that, but.
What are we going to do?
Thank you, chief.
With the room, with the fire department room?
That's going to be a discussion that we'll probably have to have going forward on what's going to all happen there.
Not setting anything aside?
With.
For any construction or anything?
Oh, not, again, we don't know what we're doing with that side. There's nothing, no fund balance that's going to be set aside that's directly for that, not in this budget, not. And any type of renovations and stuff that would happen would probably maybe have to be part of a borrowing, depending on what the prices would be.
I just want to add, like, the, the stuff will still be there in January. It's, so we'll still need fire station two, that stuff at least for a few months going into next year. So we didn't want to make any capital change until we had a discussion here and we no longer needed that space for that equipment.
So we're going to give seventy thousand to Brookfield in addition to the five?
No, no. So five fifteen is operations, seventy thousand is for the capital for the total of five eighty five.
Bill, did you have any questions on the phone?
I, I believe that we had just talked about, but he would.
Yeah, we're, we don't have any plans and we're not making any plans yet for the fire department space until we.
And, and the equipment would be used to the fire, you know, to the police department in the way that they could.
Yeah.
And DPW.
And DPW, whatever. And chief Cass, that's.
Yeah, they still need it till the end of the year.
And then chief Cass, that is correct, where it's the five fifteen for operations, seventy thousand for the capital, and then that's the total of five eighty five.
Go ahead.
We're good.
Phil's good. Your turn. Okay. Thank you. Carry on.
So before we get into the utility funds, I just kind of wanted to cap off because that's all the levy supported funds. So the levy limit for twenty twenty six and the levy limit required by the budget is the same at two million four hundred and seventy eight thousand nine hundred fifty eight dollars. That is a fifty two thousand dollar or approximately fifty three thousand dollar increase from the previous year, two point eight, two point one eight percent. Net new construction for twenty twenty five increased by five thousand thirty eight dollars. Or at least it allowed the levy to increase by that much. Net new construction was obviously more than that. And the amount of levy paid towards debt is eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. This comes to, this fluctuated a little bit, but it's still roughly the same of about a sixty cent, a sixty six cent increase per one hundred thousand dollars in assessed value or a hundred and thirty two dollar increase for a two hundred thousand dollar home due to the increase in debt service. The levy limit worksheet is going to be checked over by elders to ensure accuracy. And I just wanted to add on here, if, you know, when, if and when those fire service charges go into effect, that one thirty two is obviously going to drop off after twenty twenty six because we won't have that extra debt service on there. So it's not like we're going to increase it by the hundred thirty two and then increase it again by, you know, even, you know, the full amount of that, that hundred thirty two is going to come off. And then addition to that, it'll be also the, the amount that we levy for the fire department in twenty thirteen. So I just wanted to put that out there, not to try to confuse anybody, but that hundred thirty two dollar increase will be gone in twenty twenty seven. So highlights from the water utility. This is going to be the first full year of the new rates. I kept the estimate somewhat conservative just because I didn't know how the usage and stuff was going to play out and how that was going to be reflected with the new rates. We did have a decrease in the investment revenue expected because we have been using the water revenue bonds. So obviously we've been taking more money out of there, so then it's generating less income. And we do expect debt proceeds of about five hundred and ninety one thousand dollars from the revenue bonds. And we did have an increase to the revenue from the fire protection, fire protection expense that was transferred from the general fund to the water utility that we passed by resolution, I believe, last month. So the total revenues, including debt proceeds, are going to be about one point five million dollars. The increase from that fire protection revenue is going to be offset by, as you'll see, the storm sewer charge. I guess the bottom line upfront is that utility rates are going to be increasing for a household that uses twelve thousand gallons by about four to five dollars at the end of the day because of all the offsetting expenses. The certain line are going to increase, but others are going to decrease and it's going to offset pretty much. So for twelve thousand gallons of usage, the utility bills next year are going to be relatively the same, again, about four or five dollar increase. For the expenses, again, payroll expenses are up about seven thousand dollars, larger percentage increase in bank fees just due to the revenue bond management and contracted services, again, needing, needed because of the road project. We did, we're able to decrease expenditures because we have eliminated that transfer to the general fund and the debt service is expected to increase by about sixteen thousand dollars. For the sewer utility, we've received positive news from MMSD. MMSD significantly lowering their capital charge enough to offset their increase in user charges and then some. This is something that I, this next part is something that I'm going to want the village board to chime in on. But we need to look at raising the local rates because of the road construction costs in addition to the televising and repairs of the sanitary sewer on one twenty fourth street. Local rates would need to be increased to a minimum of four dollars and one cent per thousand gallons, up from two dollars and ninety nine cents per thousand gallons currently. This increase, as I stated, is offset for the most part by the decrease in MMSD charges leading to about a four dollar and seventy seven cent increase per gallons or about nineteen dollars a year. And then this does include twenty five thousand of net position being used to subsidize the rate. So this is not what the rates would have to be to offset all the expenses. This is a twenty five thousand dollar subsidize the rates as we did in twenty twenty five for that budget where we put a hundred thousand dollars of the net position towards that to subsidize the rates to keep them from jacking up very, very high to cover the expenses this from the plow truck. So where I'm looking for the board is, you know, we could increase this number to fifty thousand. And then there will be an absolute zero dollar increase in the sewer rates together when you combine MMSD and Village. But I just wanted to kind of leave it up to you on how you wanted that to be structured. If you wanted the twenty five, if you wanted the fifty, if you wanted me to completely eliminate the use of the net position. I just kind of wanted to leave it up to you and get your opinions on that because I think that I did that last year during this time.
I thought the sewer fund had a significant balance or.
Correct.
A, a large surplus and that's why we were taking money out of it.
Correct. It was, it was to, to, basically what we had discovered was that there was issues with the capital charge going for the past couple of years, which resulted in revenues being brought in and a buildup of that net position. So we were using that hundred thousand dollars to try to, you know, again subsidize the rates and to kind of pay that back to the residents. So we're not increasing those, those rates. Obviously, that's not something that we can support long term. And, but I wanted to just try to, you know, start to wean off of that, use, still use the net position to subsidize, but trying to wean off of that again, with the four dollar and seventy seven cent increase per quarter. Again, if you wanted to go to the fifty thousand, then it would be zero dollar increase. But I thought that trying to, again, save the, the reserves as much as we can just because we don't know how the project is going to look in future years because we have not televised north of Hampton on one twenty fourth and we're concerned that we're going to find the same problems there. And that's going to come out and that, I think President Castor, if you asked, I think it reported was about sixty some thousand dollars to do that repair on one twenty fourth with just two spot repairs.
Just ballpark, do you know what the balance is in that account?
Um, not off the top of my head. I want, it's, it's over a million dollars. I know that.
That's not surplus though, that's.
That, that's the net position, the accumulation of all of the revenues over expenditures since the establishment of the fund. So it would be technically a surplus, yes.
And I, I think that's, we got that large amount because we had been over, not overcharging, but the rate wasn't necessarily accurate.
Yeah, it was, there was, there was issues, again, kind of going back to what, what Michelle brought up in the audit in August, those have all been corrected.
I think, and I'll send this out to the board for discussion, but given the large amount of surplus in there and all the other chart, other things that we have going on, especially with the, the first year of the fire department, just till we get ourselves established, would there be any objection to just increasing that to using fifty thousand to offset that for one year and get a better handle on that next year?
So you want to take, take more money out of it instead of saving more?
Well, ye- yes, I. Well, ye- yes, I'd like to, um, I'd like to consider, we have a million plus dollars of monies in the sewer fund that has built up over the years.
Extra.
Extra.
Okay.
Surplus. So last year, we had used some of that to help offset the rate, the increase last year. And I see what Ben's doing. This year, he wants to use a little bit of it and then increase it a little bit. And what I'm asking the board is, do we want to just, um, for one more year, use more of the surplus to just kind of help with all the other expenses coming at us for one year? And that's because of the, the changeover to the fire department.
So what, can I ask a question then?
Hmm.
What kinds of things can that surplus go to?
It would be. Uh, ever, anything in the sewer utility. So it would cover any type of, um, project that we would want, you know, if, if we didn't want to, let's just say, borrow for, um, something.
Can it go towards the road?
Yes, it, it could, it could go towards the road project, yes. Again, that's, I think I calculated it.
That's our biggest.
And yeah, I think.
That, that, yeah, the capital project cost would be six hundred forty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be in favor of increasing it by the four seventy-seven a year. I mean, that's a burrito. That's not even a burrito. It's like negligible of an increase, and that's going to keep a lot, you know, twenty-five thousand more in there then, to be at our disposal. I mean, we're behind on our.
Sewers and roads, yeah, we're, we're hurting. I don't think the numbers get better for our sewers and roads with what we're incurring right now, right? I mean, we're just doing some minor on a hundred and twenty-fourth street, just in spots, right?
Correct, the spots where we found those cracks.
So.
I, I'd like to, you do it like how you have it there, but I mean, I see the option. I get your line of thinking, but that's right, how I feel about it.
That's what it's for, discussion. Bill, did you have any comment on that?
Uh, are you gonna, I, I'm just trying to clarify now, if we keep it at the four seventy-seven, you would not borrow out of that account, you would not take any money out, if you want to change it? Something else, you would take some money out and use it for the sewer system?
So the four seventy-seven, this, the four seventy-seven dol, four dollars and seventy-seven dollar, uh, seventy cent increase would be with twenty-five thousand dollars of net position being used to subsidize the rates. Um, so if, go ahead.
So we're already using it?
Okay, yeah, so, so, yeah, we would be, that's factored in there. Again, you can move it up or down. Again, if it was fifty thousand, the increase would be lower, um, because we would be not needing to raise that revenue from the rates. Um, if you brought it down to zero, then those, um, to cover that twenty-five thousand. So again, that's kind of how.
So for another twenty-five thousand, how much less will, would that, so from four seventy-seven, what would twenty-five thousand dollars more? Basically. Was to take it down to?
I would have to calculate that in the spreadsheet, which I don't have access to, it's not on the server. But I can get you that, um, number tomorrow.
I guess, I guess I'm fine with whatever we do, but I, we're already increasing a hundred thirty-two dollars on the levy.
Right.
And I guess my thinking was just help the resident for one more year, because we are sitting on a million dollars. And then.
Yeah, but I hate to use it all at once, or a major portion, I'd rather use a small portion like you're talking, uh, than use a, a big swath of it, uh, because that's been done in the village work before, about eighteen, seventeen years, eighteen years ago, and there was seven billion dollars in the account at that time, in, in general accounts. And it was, uh, decreased eventually a lot over the last ten years. So I would hate to see that happen again, because we did have a considerable amount of money built up in the municipal fund. And then it was all due to keep the prices down, keep our costs down, uh, to the ever-consuming, the village people. And, uh, it's just really, really hard for me to, uh, say suck on that million dollars, it's just really hard. But if we have to, we have to.
Leave it as is, doesn't bother me, that's what it's for, discussion. So if we leave it at the twenty-five thousand this year, we leave ourselves open to using another twenty-five thousand next year if it does go up again. So if we use it all now, and then we, next year, like, wow, we, we can't, we don't want to use it. So do we make it any better for the residents by giving it to them all in one year? Or do we try to just continually help a little at a time? That would be my question.
Yeah, and I, I would be, I would side with that more, just because, again, we don't know exactly where we're going to fall. Because, again, this was the first year where we used the hundred, that, like, the net position, we used a hundred thousand this year. So I would like to see where we fall with the final revenues and expenditures and see what kind of hit was taken. So if we used, again, we were planning using a hundred thousand, but in reality, the revenues and the expenditures netted out to only be fifty thousand, instead of the hundred thousand that were budgeted, then again, we would, the, the impact, we could, you know, you know, use that, again, that fifty thousand that we were expecting to get hit on, we can then disperse it to future years as well. I would kind of like to, to not sprinkle, that's not the right word, but kind of spread it out, um, a little bit more. Um, just because, like I said, we're, we're, this is the first time we're really doing this in, in the modern age.
I think I'm in favor of this four seventy-seven increase personally. That's, and we're, but the increase is also being discount, I don't even want to say discounted, but we are subsidizing it, uh, already. My just fear is that we, we give it fifty this year, and then we get a bump next year, and we can't do nothing, and then it goes up even more. So where did we gain helping?
Sure.
This would give us a little bit of leeway to continually help.
And this is only twenty bucks a year, I mean.
Well, every dollar counts, and it's, I mean, I'm, I'm a taxpayer as well. So I look at it that way as too. So I'd like to know that there's still some help down the road when we need it, if we need it.
And like I said, we'll have a better idea of that for, you know, this time next year, when we have those audited numbers and we see kind of what that impact is and for twenty twenty-five's numbers. So again, like I said, if it comes in at, at fifty thousand, well, shoot, great, you know, we have that extra fifty thousand that we were expecting to spend as, that, you know, to, on that, uh, net position hit, then now we can, again, take that and move it, you know, around. And we're still, again, we're still up, um, even if we use the hundred thousand and the twenty-five, we're still up from where we were, um, like, three, four years ago with the net position. Um, so it, you know, either way that you cut it, it's still, we're still coming up better than we were years ago.
So the local rate is, with this plan, four is going to be increased to four dollars and one penny?
Correct.
And it says there, increase to a minimum of, well, what should that rate be then?
Well, like I said, it would be, I guess I probably should have maybe not used the, the word minimum, but basically, when, when you use the twenty-five thousand, um, it would be the four oh one. If you decreased it, it would have to go higher than that. If you, um, increased the, that, um, amount of net position being used, it would be lower than, it wouldn't be the minimum, it would be, it would go lower than that. It would be, I want to say like around three ninety some.
Do we know what that rate should be going forward?
Yes, so with, with, if we keep it at twenty-five thousand, it's the four oh one for the local charge.
And then next year, I guess, okay, so if we did not put twenty-five thousand dollars of net position into this to subsidize it, what would that go from four oh one, what would be the next number up?
As I told, um, Mr. Baylor, I would need to run that through the spreadsheet, which, again, I don't have access to because I'm not connected to the server. So I can, I'm having Aaron take a note of it quick, and we'll get those numbers and send them out to you. Because, again, this isn't setting the budget.
I understand.
So we can get, we can get those numbers for you, um, and provide them to you before the next meeting.
So numbers both ways?
Correct, yes, we can do numbers both ways.
Paul's question as well as mine.
Yep.
Sounds good.
It's awesome.
And then, again, I did want to make, you know, make a quick note that the, the MMSD did put in there, and Paul got a copy of this, um, because they sent it to the village president as well. But, um, they, the capital charges may be revised if they find that the August twenty twenty-five flood caused damage to areas that now need immediate, more immediate attention. I haven't gotten any word from that, and we've had their numbers for over a month now. So, again, that could change, but I'm not really expecting it to, um, but we'll, we'll have to wait and see. Um, as I stated, um, the expenses are, are down considerably, again, due to the MMSD reduction in costs, um, and, uh, decrease in capital costs, while, you know, the capital costs are still remaining high, they're lower than they are, um, this year. Um, as I stated, the payroll is increasing, um, and we also are seeing the cost savings with the maintenance expenses due to the elimination of the general fund transfer. Um, debt is coming due from the twenty twenty-five borrowing, um, in twenty twenty-six, so we did see a little bit of an increase with regards to that. And the capital projects, um, come, are still high compared to pre-twenty twenty-five levels at nine hundred, or ninety-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars. With the storm utility, um, I, we are able to decrease the revenue, um, due to the decreasing expenditures. Um, and like I said before, it is enough to cover the, um, fire protection charge increase that would be in effect for, uh, January one of twenty twenty-six. So, again, we were, we're very fortunate where we have the total dollars being spent in the storm fund, um, being able to be decreased by the, pretty much the exact same amount, um, as the water is increasing, um, for twenty twenty-six. So, again, that will be pretty much a cancellation of those two, um, increases and decreases. Um, we do have a small, uh, influx, uh, fluctuation of interest income upwards, and, uh, overall, the revenues, uh, can go down by about eighty thousand dollars. Again, it's not because of any particular reason that's negative, it's just that we have more ERUs, because we did an ERU analysis. Um, so we have more ERUs, and the expenses overall with regards to the capital are decreasing. Um, and, uh, like all the other ones, we do have the payroll expenses, um, cost savings coming from auditing, because we did, uh, re, kind of re, move some of the money around in the utility funds. Uh, we've noticed that the storm fund was getting a little too high of a percentage, so we did shift that a little bit. Um, and then the contracted services expense light item is also decreasing rather substantially, because we don't have to budget for the ERU projects. That was about sixteen thousand dollars in costs that we had to budget for this year that we don't have to next year. Um, and, um, again, the amount of borrowing, um, is also being reduced as we near the end of the, uh, payment term on the loan that we took out. Um, I want to say about seven, eight years ago. Um, so that's kind of, uh, what's going on with the storm fund. And so this is kind of the last slide here, um, kind of just talking about what I spoke about in summary with regards to the fiscal pressures. Um, the village is severely restrained ability to raise needed funds, mainly due to the levy limit constraints, um, fire department transition causing, uh, the bulk of the problems in the general funds that we have to close the budget cap on. Um, again, utility rates expected to remain steady overall, um, with only minor increases. And, um, it's something that I always like to put in there, is more action is needed by the state to allow the village to continue functioning as it currently does. Because, again, the, that infamous number of seven billion dollars sitting in that rainy day fund, um, is not really being allocated, um, properly, in my opinion. So, um, that is all that I have for you for that. So if you have any final questions, feel free to ask them. Um, again, you can always, um, send me your questions, um, after the meeting as well. Um, I'm, I'm always, always, uh, having my email box open, so.
It's a good budget. I appreciate each department taking the time. Uh, you know, I think everyone in the village understands that, that each department is tight, and we do the absolute best we can with every dollar that we're, we get. So, uh, very impressive, uh, again, I, I like what I'm seeing. And a nice presentation as well, both Aaron and Ben and Chief and the library and DPW for.
Chief.
For doing this. I think we'll have one year of, uh, the monies will be a little bit strange, just because we're switching over, which is a major transition, and then I think next year, twenty twenty-seven budget will be a little bit easier with money-wise.
We hope.
Hopefully, hopefully, hopefully. I, I can be optimistic.
I'm with you, I'm with you a hundred percent.
Um, any questions, uh, from the board at all, for any of the department heads or the village staff?
You are still going to have that line-by-line document.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so you'll still get that, like, almost two-hundred-page document.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm having Aaron read through it to make sure I didn't spell anything wrong. Thank you.
Uh, I think that answers all my questions. I know we've, we've spent a lot of time on it, so. Uh, the, the one thing that I know you touched upon that is unexpected is, uh, the big sewer repair on a hundred twenty-fourth. That will be tied into the construction. And then I believe we were possibly looking at doing the borrowing for the water replacement again for on the two-year cycle. We were going to look into that.
We're going to look into that, correct.
So we're going to stay consistent with that. Does anyone have any questions at all?
They're pretty happy.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion's been made in second, in the discussion on the motion.
Yeah, I want to discuss that.
Um, favor say aye?
Aye.
All in opposition say nay. Motion passes, adjourned at seven forty-one. Thank you. Ah, all right, Mike's done.